Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. We thank you all for joining us tonight virtually, and we'll get through the agenda as efficiently as possible. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll start or begin with a meditation or a prayer. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Mayor, you have a proclamation?
Mr. President, I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I have a proclamation, and I have a guest. I hope that's okay after, uh, after the proclamation.
Okay.
You already know about the guest.
Okay.
I'll introduce her after.
I got it.
Whereas Jay Sterling Morton in eighteen seventy-two proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and the planting of trees is a vital step in developing civic pride and a sense of community. And trees provide an abundance of environmental and aesthetic advantages to citizens and wildlife wherever they are found. Trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, reduce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and provide character to our community. Now, therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty Arbor Day in our city. And I urge all citizens to plant trees in order to promote the well-being of this and future generations. I also have with me Alyssa Hastings, who is the City of Salisbury Sustainability Coordinator, who I think is going to talk a little bit about our tree program in the city and our efforts to increase not only the number of trees, but also the quality of the built and economic environment as a result.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your support of celebrating Arbor Day. And I want to give a special shout-out again to Dr. Sarah Surack, senior seminar student, who came and presented to City Council last fall. They really got the ball rolling on our Arbor Day Tree City application, which is, this proclamation is a key component of our application. I'm putting all the pieces together, and we will have our application submitted by the end of this week. Next year, I hope to be able to have a larger celebration for Arbor Day, including tree planting. This year, it's just going to look a little bit different due to the COVID-nineteen situation. I want to point out, as the mayor mentioned, that trees have so many benefits in our community, including reducing the urban heat island effect, cooling our streets and homes and neighborhoods, fighting air pollution, soaking up stormwater, and providing habitat for our valuable biodiversity, birds and pollinators, and all the creatures that we depend on. Trees provide so many benefits in our community, and in this time during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, I explicitly want to highlight the mental health benefits that trees provide in our community. A lot of studies show that trees even have the ability to reduce stress, anxiety, and depression just by having trees in your community. So I want to encourage us to safely, as we can, explore and, from a social distance, get out in nature during this time, and make sure that we are breathing and, you know, continuing to explore and really appreciate the trees that we have in our neighborhoods. As the mayor mentioned, we also are about to go through the process of having a thorough urban tree canopy study done, and hopefully a tree catalog, so that in the city we know exactly what type of trees we have and where are good locations to plant more trees. So I just, I wanted to be brief, and thank you all for this time. I look forward to planting more trees with you all soon. And as a last, a last little shout-out, I wanted to let you know to keep an eye out for a virtual Earth Day celebration. Because we aren't able to celebrate our traditional awesome birthday celebration at the zoo, the city is going to partner with the zoo to bring a virtual Earth Day celebration next Wednesday. And that'll be all sorts of environmental groups having videos and talking about what they're doing for their work. So thank you again, and I look forward to planting trees in the future.
Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are you going to plant that tree behind you?
This one's an indoor plant, so it's going to stay in its pot.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Who is the second?
April.
Ms. Jackson? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Ms. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Five-zero. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols. Mrs. Nichols?
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, we got you.
Okay, good. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty work session minutes, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty legislative session minutes, April sixth, two thousand and twenty work session minutes, Resolution Number three zero two seven, approving the enterprise zone application for two eighteen West Main Street, and Resolution Number three zero two eight, approving the enterprise zone application for two thirty-two Leonard Blaine Investment LLC, Delaware Elevator, Inc. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. I'll call the roll for any questions. Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
All right then, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Votes five-zero. Entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Mr. Boda?
Second.
Mrs. Gregory? Ms. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. We have two award of bids this evening and two items for surplus. The first award of bid is for contract number ITV two zero dash one two two. It's the wastewater treatment plant, internal recycle pump replacement. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to purchase a vertical turbine solids handling pump for the wastewater treatment plant as approved in the fiscal year twenty budget. With a twenty-two-week lead time, this pump will be stored as a spare until needed, thereby reducing the possibility of a critical failure in the event a pump needs to be repaired or rebuilt. Lead times for repair, rebuild, and replacement can be up to six months. The Department of Waterworks personnel will handle the installation when the pump needs to be put into service. Per Section two point three two point zero five zero C five E, Procedure for Competitive Bidding of the City of Salisbury Code of Ordinances. Competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary in the following circumstance. Sole source procurement. Sole source procurement exists whenever the director determines that there is only one available source for the subject of a procurement contract, and he or she may award the contract without competition to that source. The current IRPS building and wet well were designed for the Pentair Fairbanks brand of pump in the two thousand and eight upgrade. Pentair Fairbanks has a contractual sales agreement with Sidnor Hydro Incorporated of Richmond, Virginia, which includes the sales of pumps, parts, and service for the municipal market in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the District of Columbia, the State of Maryland, and Sussex County, Delaware. Therefore, all orders for pumps, parts, and service for this brand of pump in the State of Maryland must be placed through Sidnor Hydro Incorporated. To change brands would require a rebuild of the IRPS building and wet well, which would prove too costly. Therefore, it is my determination that there is only one available source for this procurement. The procurement department requests council's approval to award the City of Salisbury contract ITV two zero dash one two two to Sidnor Hydro in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Funding is available in the accounts noted in your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Okay, I have none as well.
Okay.
Second item?
Yes. The next item is award of bid for contract ITV A dash two zero dash one zero nine auditing services. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Finance to enter into a professional service agreement for a certified public accountant firm to audit the financial statements for the City of Salisbury, Mitchell Landing, and the Zoo Commission for up to three consecutive fiscal years, fiscal year twenty through FY twenty-two, contingent upon sufficient yearly budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. Per Section SC sixteen dash three, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, competitive bidding procedures are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. Contracts for professional services or for personal services requiring special training and skill. Professional services are occupations in the tertiary or service sector of the economy, many of which involve holding professional licenses or providing specialist business support. While a clear definition is hard to attain, there are generally four types of professional service firms. Classic PSFs, professional campuses, Neo PSFs, and technology developers. This designation concludes that the auditing service requested by the Department of Finance is a professional service and thereby exempt from competitive bidding. As such, the Department of Finance has recommended Barbequain Thornton &amp; Company, LLP, as the provider of these services, as their past performance in conducting auditing services for the City of Salisbury has been exemplary. Additionally, the Department of Finance was able to negotiate a favorable and consistent rate for the initial and upcoming terms. Pending council approval of the FY twenty-one budget in June, two thousand and twenty, the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITV A dash two zero dash one zero nine auditing services to Barbequain Thornton &amp; Company, LLP, in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for an FY twenty audit engagement. It's intended that all subsequent renewals shall be processed under a contract extension clause by the Department of Procurement with no additional council approval requirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Any questions? Mr. Muir? Hold up.
Yes, I thought last year was the contract with the other company. Was that just for one year?
We also, we chose not to renew the contract with that company.
Was there a reason or just?
It was at the city's convenience.
Okay.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Mrs. Blake?
Questions.
This is Gregory?
No questions.
Okay, just correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Miller. The, the next, if we choose to go on for the next three years, we don't need, it doesn't need to come back to the council as the same as we did last time, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next surplus item?
Yes, the first surplus item is for the Salisbury Police Department, vehicle number fourteen seventy-four. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare a vehicle as surplus. This vehicle was involved in an accident which left it unable to be put into service. Vehicle identification information is included on the attached departmental memo. Upon declaration of surplus as approved by council, the city will receive insurance proceeds, and the vehicle will be turned over to the local government insurance trust as salvage.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
I have none either. Last item on the surplus.
Thank you. This is also for the Salisbury Police Department. It's a duty weapon. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following handgun as surplus. It's a Glock forty-five caliber handgun, model twenty-one, serial number BFRA six-three-four. Upon declaration of surplus as approved by the council, the aforementioned handgun will be given to retiring police officer Major Scott Cole as a retirement gift.
Very good. We congratulate Sergeant Cole. Good man. Okay, any questions on the last surplus item? Mr. Boda?
Nope, I wish Major Cole well in his retirement.
All right. Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
No questions.
Mrs. Gregory?
No. Good luck with retirement.
Lucky man. All right. If there are no other questions, we'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Five-zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Have a good day. Be safe.
Thank you.
I want to entertain a motion to approve Resolution two eight seven five.
So moved.
Ms. Blake? Who is the second, please?
April.
April? Mrs. Glanz, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Resolution Number two eight seven five. A resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as the John Deere Drive, Milford Street Association Property Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the southerly right-of-way line of John Deere Drive, henceby with the said John Deere Drive around the perimeter of Lot eleven and Lot twelve, Block A.
Okay. This is just for everybody's clarification. This is the Wawa area, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Boda?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
No.
Okay, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number two eight seven five? Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Vote is five-zero.
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I just share a thought?
Sure.
Um, I think we have a couple of, proximate annexation issues in that part of the city, right there on the east side. It might behoove us to, either have a work session topic where we talk about them collectively, some of which have not yet, there's not a request, there's flirtation. There's some areas that there's not a request at all, but are adjacent or would be gaps. So maybe what I'll do is work with Ms. Pollak on just talking through the right way to approach that. It's just, there's quite a few percolating annexation conversations around the same region. And I mean, within, you know, a rather narrow, you know, maybe quarter-mile radius. So I just wanted to bring that up. And then two, while we're approving annexation requests, I just want to note that in the time when watching our economy shut down, you know, we've got somebody wanting to do something, and want to say thank you to those involved. And that's reinforced by what Bev Toll in Amanda's department and Ms. Pollak's department announced on late last week, the updated numbers for March, which included twenty-three point nine million dollars in construction that came in, construction, building permits came into the city, making it our third-best month since two thousand and seven, and our best month since January, two thousand and seventeen. Just thought it's worth reminding ourselves that, you know, people want to do stuff, and they will, you know, when we get past all this.
Yeah, it's outstanding. A great month, for sure. I know that we have a big, pretty good planning commission meeting coming up, too, so.
You should do it.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Thank you very much for that. So as soon as you come up with a plan or strategy, just tell Kim, and we'll put it on the work session agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution two eight seven six.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number two eight seven six. A resolution of the City of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the southerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as John Deere Milford Street Association Property Annexation, beginning for the same at a point on the corporate limit, said point lying on the southerly right-of-way line of John Deere Drive, henceby the, by and with the said John Deere Drive around the perimeter of all Lot eleven and Lot twelve, Block A.
Any questions? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
None.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion to, all those in favor of Resolution Number two eight seven six? Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is five-zero. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number three zero two nine.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution Number three zero two nine. A resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to defer the revolving loan payments for Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC. Whereas the city has a revolving loan fund for the purpose of aiding revitalization in the downtown area, and whereas Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC requested a loan from these funds in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three and fifty-nine cents. And whereas the City Council approved this request and determined it meets all of the guidelines for the revolving loan at their May thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting via Resolution two nine four three, and whereas Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC used said funds to purchase restaurant equipment and has dutifully repaid on a monthly basis. And whereas the State of Maryland prohibited serving the public in restaurants and bars in the wake of the COVID-nineteen outbreak, and whereas Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC has been negatively impacted by the shutdown of the full-service restaurant and bar operations and has requested to defer their loan payment. And whereas Shamrock Hospitality Group LLC has agreed that it could resume repayment three months from the date that the governor of the State of Maryland announces the full reopening of restaurants and bar operations.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions.
Then I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution three zero two nine, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The vote is five.
Apologies. Can I interject just real quick?
Sure.
The resolution should say twelve months from the date that the governor announces the full reopening of the restaurant and bar operations.
How did that happen?
My apologies. I must have missed it in the packet.
I can make an amendment to change line twenty-five and twenty-six to say, to strike three months and add twelve months.
Wait, just so we can get it, just so we can, Mr. Tillman, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, we, we just voted on, on a resolution and passed it. The resolution needed to be modified, as you heard. The question is now, can we make an amendment to the approved resolution after it's voted on?
Yeah, there's no problem with that.
Okay.
Nothing's, nothing's been signed or finalized.
Got it. Okay. Any, any, before we, well, let's, let's do the amendment, then we can, we can talk about it. So there's a motion on the floor to make the changes, and Mr. Boda said, changing the term from three months to twelve months after the declaration. Any question, well, any questions on that? We have a second, first of all.
Second. Second.
April.
Who is, April? Ms. Jackson seconded the amendment. Mr. Boda made the amendment. Now we're open for discussion. Any, any questions or comments about it? Mr. Boda?
Uh, I think, I remember that we discussed twelve months, now that I think back to the work session, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I had a question about it last time, and we just, we landed on the twelve months.
That's, that's my memory of it as well, but I just want to make sure that everybody else is in line. Ms. Blake, you're nodding your head, I see.
Yes, I, I remember twelve months.
Mrs. Gregory, you're okay? Okay. All right then. So we'll vote on the amendment first. There's an amendment to change the, the date. Let's see what line it's on.
Lines, uh,
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
And twenty-six. All right, twenty-five and twenty-six. Change the repayment date from three months to twelve months.
And it's also in line thirty-one.
Yes.
Line thirty-one as well.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second to make those changes. I'll call the motion now, since there's no more questions. All those in favor? Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote on the amendment is five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number two five eight seven for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory, seconded. Mr. Tillman?
Uh, yes. Let's see, I'm back on. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury amending Chapter five point three two, transient merchants and mobile vendors to remove the terms hawkers and peddlers and update the licensing process, whereas Chapter five point three two, transient merchants and mobile vendors contains procedures of obtaining and renew, for obtaining and renewing licenses to engage in the activities of a in the activities of a mobile vendor or transient, transient merchant within the city, and whereas the city desires to update and streamline licensing procedures, and whereas the Office of Business Development recommends approval of the proposed code changes, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, that Chapter 5.32 Transient Merchants and Mobile Vendors of the Salisbury Municipal Code is hereby amended as follows. And Chapter 5.32 Transient Merchants and Mobile Vendors, the definitions there, they eliminate the definition of temporary business down the lines 40 and 41. And on lines 57, I believe it is, they add the word festival in addition to fair and also, or city endorsed event at the end of paragraph eight, eight. And then under Section 5.32.050, subsection G, there's a plural added to the vehicles. Also, the word is, I'll just read that paragraph. A description of the vehicles, if any, that will be used in connection with a licensed activities comma, including the state license tag and number and the vehicle identification number for each vehicle is added at the end of that section. And then the next section, 5.32.060, the words hawkers and peddlers are removed from lines 72 and 73 and substituted with mobile vendor. And then at the end, the section adds that the person shall, such bond, that the person will have to get a bond and such bond shall continue in effect for one year. And then it's adding the words running concurrently with the license and the words after the license expiration date have been removed. Now, this was the section that the council had requested me to explore. We did hear back this morning and I, things have just been shut down and we've had some difficulty getting through with the bonding agents. But my, my research and my conversation with them tells me that we should at least have the option to extend that bond for a year afterward. I'm not sure you have to require it in every case, but I, I would recommend that we place an amendment in here for the next reading that would allow you to extend it for one year if necessary. The reason for that is when you're talking about a mobile vendor who may or may not be in the community, may or may not have assets here, if you feel concerned about his financial strength, you, you might want to ask that the bond be extended.
Gotcha, so what we'll do is if you draw that up and we'll, we'll discuss it at the next work session and then we'll be ready for the second reading.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, I, I already have something in mind, so.
Right, okay.
And then the, the next section, 5.32.070, beginning line 79, it says a non-refundable fee of, it's being increased to $100 from $50 shall be paid to the Business Development Director when a new application is filed. And then under 5.32.075, the investigation fee is replaced with the words renewal fee. And beginning at line 84, it reads a non-refundable fee of $50 shall be paid to the Business Development Director when a renewal application is filed. And the other language that appears before that has been removed. Then down under Section 5.32.090, subsection B, it says, in the case of a transient merchant, a license issued under this chapter shall be of a duration as set by the Business Development Director after reviewing the application. And that's simply a name change from the clerk to the Business Development Director. Under subsection C, the word hawker and peddler is, or those two words are removed again in line 101. And then in subsection 5.32.100, under renewal of license, again clerk is substituted, is removed and Business Development Director is added. The, the fee shall be set in Section 5.32.075 instead of the prior reference to .070. And then at the end of that paragraph, the sentence is added that reads, any substantial changes in ownership or the lapse of an active license shall require a new application license fee as set forth in Section 5.32.070. And then down under 5.32.130, again, the city endorsed event words are added in line 129.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory.
No questions.
All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2587 for the first reading. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2588 for the first reading.
We'll move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mrs. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance reallocating bond funds. It's an ordinance, it's ordinance number 2588, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Salisbury amending and supplementing ordinance 2140 passed by the Council on March 14, 2011, approved by the mayor of the City of Salisbury on March 18, 2011, and effective on March 18, 2011, in order to authorize and empower the city to use and apply a portion of the principal amount of $7,693,000, City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bond of 2012, issued on December 5, 2012, plus certain investment earnings thereon to projects identified herein as chemical building HVAC, paleo fluoride room door and tank replacement, wastewater treatment plant, outfall inspection and repairs, park aerator building improvements and park water treatment plant roof improvements, in addition to the projects originally identified in ordinance 2140. And identify the sources from which debt service on the obligations as defined in ordinance 2140 allocable to such additional projects will be payable in the first instance, providing that this title is a fair statement of substance of this ordinance, authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions in connection with the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the use of the proceeds of the 2012 bond. And there is a chart on page three that sets forth the amounts.
Thank you. Any questions?
Three and four, I apologize.
Any questions, Mr. Boda?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Ms. Jackson?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
All right, hearing there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2588 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2589 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake, Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury, Maryland granting a right-of-way to Delmarva Power and Light Company across city-owned property Salisbury Parking Lot Number 15 for installation of electric vehicle stations, whereas the City of Salisbury owns Parking Lot 15, located near the intersection of West Market Street and Camden Street, and whereas the City of Salisbury desires of having facilities installed for the purpose of setting up electric vehicle charging stations on its lots, and whereas the Delmarva Power and Light Company has requested that the city enter into a right-of-way agreement to allow it to install service and service the electric vehicle charging stations, and whereas a copy of said agreement is attached here too, which allows Delmarva, Delmarva the right to construct, operate and maintain the infrastructure in association with a new electric vehicle charging stations at the city's parking lot, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the City of Salisbury authorizes Delmarva to construct, operate, maintain electric vehicle charging stations in Parking Lot Number 15 near West Main Street and West Camden's, and, excuse me, West Main Street and Camden Street, that the mayor is authorized to execute the right-of-way agreement attached here too, and that the location of the facilities shall be shown on Exhibit 1 attached to said agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
No, I'm just glad to see it.
Me too, me too. Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2589 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2590 for the first reading.
We'll move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Who's, Mrs. Gregory or Ms. Blake?
Ms. Blake.
Gotcha. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, this is a ordinance to approve the financing through the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration for the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Project. And the ordinance actually appears to have a different number, nine seven, instead of nine zero, I'm assuming that's an error.
Mrs. Nichols, can you clarify?
That's the old ordinance, the new one is 2590.
Yes, 2590.
Mark, it's the last page in your packet.
Is it? Okay, sorry about that. Here it is, I'm sorry. Just turned to the wrong one. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the Water Sewer Capital Projects Budget to appropriate funds for the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Project, whereas ordinance 2497 authorized the city to borrow funds from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration an amount not to exceed $120,000 for the purpose of the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Project. And whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has completed the design and public bidding of the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Project, and whereas the City of Salisbury has received approval of the procurement of the construction contract for the Maryland Department of the Environment, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development seeks to allocate funding from the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration to, to the construction account, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's water sewer capital project budget is hereby amended as follows. One, increase the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration funding budget by $120,000. And two, increase the Mount Herman Road Sewer Extension Construction Budget by $120,000.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any questions, Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake?
None.
This is Gregory?
None.
Chair, is that a positive vote or a negative vote? And the chair, the chair votes aye, the chair votes aye.
They're being mouthy.
Motion is passed, five zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Can I just take a quick second to thank the council for supporting this? And thank Amanda and DID for putting this forward. Now, I think anytime we try to measure the impact of something on, something that we invest funds in on a, how many people are affected basis, this probably would have fallen right to the bottom of the list. But I think doing the right thing, you know, this is the single property that needs water and sewer in our city and in this day and age, we should have everybody on water and sewer. So it's a good thing environmentally and I just think the right thing to do. So I just wanted to say thanks to everybody. Who's involved.
Yeah.
For the council.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
I don't think that was a vote, I think you asked if we had any questions, so I vote aye.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, I guess. I'm gonna head down, wait for the last one anyway, so, all right. So we, we have no.
You threw me off, man.
We have no questions, let's just make sure we do it the right way. All those in favor of ordinance number 2590, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
I guess the dog's not voting this time.
Not this time.
Okay. The chair votes aye, the vote is five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Tillman.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Heath.
Ms. Glanz, do we have any chat requests for comment?
We do not, and I hear Kim is trying to jump in as well. I don't see.
Kim?
Thank you. Mr. Heath, I'd like to clarify for the annexation resolution, Resolution 2875 and 2876, that the public hearing.
Yeah, May 11th, I was going to announce that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I've got it on my list to announce as of last. No problem.
All right.
That's all right, go ahead, finish, you can finish.
Yes, should have been probably read in the resolutions, but we didn't hear it, so, all right, thank you.
All right, and again, just to, just to confirm, there will be a public hearing on annexation on May the 11th. So if you have an interest in that, please write it down. There's nothing further on the agenda, remarks, any remarks for a good order, Mr. Boda?
No remarks.
Ms. Jackson?
I would like to congratulate and thank the mayor for such a wonderful job that he's doing on the COVID. I don't know if it's a task force, but he's doing an excellent job keeping the community and the city abreast of what's going on, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake?
If you're healthy, please give blood, please, many people need blood.
Okay, Mrs. Gregory?
I just want to thank the first responders who spent their Easter Sunday going around town. I didn't see them, but I could hear them for sure. And I really, really appreciate them taking time out of their holiday to go around and brighten the day for the kids in the neighborhoods. I think that was just an amazing idea and I'm, I'm just so proud that our community is doing things like that.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Just a few, couple of final comments. I want to, I too want to echo the need for blood. We're at a critical stage. If you're healthy and you have the ability to give blood, we need your help. We need your help, so please, if you can do it, do it. And I did a little exercise the other night, sitting around, and we talked about, we talk about the people at the hospitals, we talk about the firefighters and EMT. There are thousands of people in our community, they're putting their life on the line each and every day. Not, not just the people we, I just mentioned, but you have people giving food out, you have the school system with their food drives. You've got private citizens who have set up food pantries. The list goes on and on and on. And I know that I'm a broken record when I say it, but our strength is our people and this proves it. The longer we stay in and hang in together, the quicker we're going to get out of this thing. So as my last message to everybody, please be safe, be careful, and God bless you. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.